Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Grand Rapids Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, November 5th. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic or which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Faub.
Present.
Eaton, present. Haskins.
Here.
O'Connor.
Present.
Randles.
Present.
Ross. Slade.
Here.
Baker is excused. President Lanier.
Present.
Hader, present.
We have an agenda before us. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda is written. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Great, we have an approved agenda. We will move right into celebrations. Superintendent Neal, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lynn.
Lynn Heenstra is here to present. Hello, Madam President Lanier.
Good evening.
Board of Education members and Superintendent Neal. Our community's children has facilitated the ELO network since 2001. And during that time, this network has grown to over 50 organizations, including the Heart of West Michigan United Way and the Marie and Doug DeVos Be- Believe to Become Initiative, all the providers that are involved in that, in the after-school programs and summer programs. And it includes colleges, universities, the police department, and many others, including from Wyoming and Kentwood. We're dedicated to ensuring that all children have access to quality after-school programs, particularly during the hours of 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. and during the summer months. After-school programs, as you know, plays a critical role in the lives of children, providing them a safe place to do homework and engage in hands-on learning opportunities. GRPS has been an incredible partner through this journey. Through the development and evaluation of the Loop and Loft programs, GRPS within the ELO network demonstrates incredible leadership on quality, commitment, and dedication to safe and supportive places for children to learn and grow. Your colleague on this board, Tony Baker, serves as the Chair of the ELO Evaluation Committee, and he's actually leading the work that's going to happen in the next phase of our development that's funded by the Wallace Foundation and the National League of Cities. In fact, we've just celebrated our 11th year, and we had an annual meeting this past Friday with the Wallace Foundation and the National League of Cities, who's supporting our work. Every year, we honor people for leadership and advocacy. So with me here is Victor Vescus, who is the next Chair of the Leadership Council of the ELO Network, and we'd like to honor someone who is a champion of children.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure to be with you here this evening to, you know, to present this recognition award to somebody who is quite deserving of it. But at the same time, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of you for the role that you play to making sure that our children in our community, you know, have the best education that can be made available to them with the resources that you have. At this time, what we would like to do is to honor an individual who has stood head and shoulders among her peers in their dedication and commitment to the children in our community. She has shown strength of character to make the hard decisions for the best interests of children. She has been an ELO Network Charter member and stalwart supporter of after-school programs for children, knowing very well that parents need a safe place for their children to go where they can do their homework and experience hands-on learning. She has put in over 32 years of service in our Grand Rapids Public Schools. She is willing to do what it takes to make sure that our Grand Rapids District, in its next phase of transformation, will ensure that all children will succeed. This year, we honor Teresa Weatherill Neal, Superintendent of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, as a recipient for the Champion of Children Award.
Actually, I'd like to thank the ELO Network and especially Lynn and some of my other colleagues. I have worked very closely with this group for years, years. And although I am the person who received this wonderful award, it really could have gone to any of my colleagues in the ELO Network, because they are all so committed to children in the after-school program. And even as a part of this transformation plan, as we move forward, we will not lose sight of the importance of after-school, 3-6. We all know that. And it really is because of the ELO Network really being the champions in this community to teach us the importance of 3-6, really knowing where all of our students are. So I am honored, actually, to be recognized by my colleagues. So thank you to both of you.
Next, we have our report from our student rep. Dr. Faub, will you be introducing our student rep?
I believe he arrived.
Okay, okay. Our next item on the agenda is for public comment. If you would like to give public comment on agenda items, on any of our agenda items, feel free to fill out a public comment card. They can be located on the tables as you are entering into this room on either side. And just kind of hold those up, and someone will grab those from you if you're interested in giving public comment. I do have a few cards here now. Jolynn, Phoenix, and Anita. If you could come down to the front row, please. Good evening. Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
In order for his parent to draw his board, and tonight he's got his manual chair. So we're kind of tag teaming this.
And I've asked Anita, we're all from Kenosha Park Elementary.
Okay.
And specifically, we're all members of the Pohai Program, physical impairment, our other health impairment. And we're coming under the agenda item because our school is slated to be, it's transformed. Right now, half of, there's two schools in one building. Half of it is a preschool, specialized preschool, diatastics center. Half of it is a neighborhood elementary school, which holds the center-based Pohai Program, physical impairment, other health impairment, and we get kids from all over the country. Anita has a speech there, she's there. She's going to introduce Phoenix.
Hello to everybody.
Good evening.
This is a very unexpected pleasure, hence the outfit.
It's fine.
It is truly a pleasure to talk about Phoenix and all that he has been able to accomplish. He has been my student at Kenosha for the speech pathology since he was in kindergarten. And I'll never forget the first time I met him. I introduced myself, hello, and this is a kindergarten, remind you, hello, Phoenix, I'm Miss Anita, I'll be your speech pathologist. Nice to meet you, Miss Anita, I look forward to working with you.
Happy Phoenix.
And he's only expanded from there. He has, he's worked so hard, he is an inspiration to the other students, and any, anything good there is to say about any student is what I would love to say about Phoenix. The only bad thing is that he will be leaving me after this year, and I will miss him very much, but I'm sure he can tell you more about him and his concerns. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Phoenix.
How much only you were meant when you are happy to be speaking in front of you. One of the things I think separate way, can I shave any other single is the words surrounding it. If you have millions right by the plants, the creek trails every year that come in a quarter. I'm no one with someone who will be done through the single. I think every single student enjoys their great joy.
If you want a little clarification, we have a courtyard that's totally enclosed in this room with a door, and every year, there are ducks that come, nest there, and hatchlings, when they're ready to go, the mom knocks with her little door. And Phoenix has been able to be the leader of them out of the school, through the parking lot. And we went for a walk this fall in the woods, and he said he wished he could spend the whole day learning in the woods, and he kept saying over and over again, what fond memories I've brought back from all those years. Okay, so.
So that I bring greatly separate can I shave another thing is the pool we have the pits in the wood. I love it. It's such a great tool for all the special needs. Cause every time I go in there, feels like my physicalish used to disappear. And I think that greatly helps every single Pohai student that is ever going to Kenosha.
Do you want to speak about the inclusion of all? You're doing great, do you want to say something about the inclusion? What, right, you generally?
Yeah, another thing number, Kenosha is it, is how it's combined with general, which is a undescribable tool I can't even press. How in poetry this is aiming. This is if you put a in a school just Pohai, you're shooting yourself in the floor.
I don't think that's part of the agenda right now, but.
Oh.
But it's better than what you did.
Yeah, and I didn't have the upper unity, who knows? What upper unity's what have gets disappeared. Thank you.
Thank you.
With an lady my own, and you and I hope we put this to song.
Thank you very much, Phoenix.
So we know that what, that you're not going to ignore or forget the Pohai program, and that there's, they'll find a place for us, but right now, a lot of us are concerned because we don't, they haven't set a place as part of the plan and don't intend to until after the plan is finalized, which makes us all nervous, because the Pohai program needs 60 square feet of floor space per individual in a classroom. We can only have 10 kids, but you can have a lot more staff, because we have nurses, one-on-one nurses and stuff like that. So we really need, and we feel that perhaps Kenosha looks like it's underutilized, because there are few students in certain classrooms, and also the preschool side has that, a cap. So the special ed schools always tend to look like they're not fully utilized. But really, I think what I'm here, and I've asked Phoenix and Miss Anita, Mrs. O'Connor came, because I would like the board to put a face on us. Is that for me? I thought I'd get three minutes. No, I don't get three minutes?
Well, nine altogether and.
Okay, a face on us and to consider, because I have this idea for us. What makes Grand Rapids great? What attracts people to schools? What attracts people? What are the schools that are really growing here? The schools that are really growing and doing great are the Environmental Science Academy, CA Frost, the Zoo School, and the Blandford School. Why? They're offering exciting science things. There is nothing on the southeast side. Kenosha could be the school on the southeast side that offers these exciting school of innovation. Plaster Creek, right now Kelvin College has joined up with West Michigan Environmental Action, Kent County District, Watershed Churches, Christian Reform Church of North America, Watershed Schools, other community partners. There's a long history, there's a teacher at our school, and I would really like you to at least think about delaying the decision for a year so that we can consider. They have a $375,000 grant that they got from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, they have another grant.
Ms. Jolynn, if you have anything that you'd like to leave, we can make copies of it.
All right.
Absolutely.
And so I just am asking that you could consider maybe making us an exciting school that people would leave charter schools and Christian schools to come to.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, Miss Anita. Thanks, Phoenix. You'll take those if you want us to, and then we can make copies and give them back to you before you leave. You don't, okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dave Clark and John Waukes? Are there any other public comment cards? If you have them, just hold them up and someone will grab them from you. Charneece and Shantice, if you all can come and just sit in the front row. You'll be next. Good evening, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Mrs. Lanier. How are you?
I'm doing well, and you?
Good.
Great.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Good to see you again.
Oh, great.
That's him?
I saw this one.
I'm just teasing him.
Okay, all this chit-chat, I'm going to start the timer.
We have a meeting to run. Thanks, Jay.
I basically wanted to come ask a couple of questions about the transformation plan. I know that it's fresh out, there's a lot of discussion about it right now, especially in the community. I'm sure, as you said, this is just a proposal right now, and it's not hard and fast. Couple of the basic questions that I had, that a number of people we've talked with in our community have been asking now, is number one, why Creston and not Central? Northside is, that is our high school up there, is Creston. It's our only high school, it's well represented in that area. But in terms of athletics, we have athletics at Creston where Central does not. The condition of the Creston school is far better than the Central school, and then the traffic conditions, obviously, going to Plainfield and onto Creston's campus versus going to downtown is a lot more difficult in the Heritage Hill area. So some of the questions seem to be more along the lines of what is the reasoning behind choosing Creston to shut down instead of Central? In that Central's being slated to have the Centers of Innovation in it, which I think is a great idea, putting them all together, makes perfect sense. But why are we choosing the building of Central over Creston? I guess I'm just looking for an answer for that. Second question was, in the proposal, it had listed some of the cons, especially for Central, was the potential for another bond. And I'm thinking, we just had this warm, safe, and dry. Why are we raising the issue of another potential bond, especially in a hard financial time as we are in right now? And the third question I have is, given that there's so much involvement, and it affects so many people, either by moving them around or shutting down their school altogether, or the massive changes, why is it limited to simply an up or down vote? I would think that this would warrant a lot more discussion, especially amongst the public. I know, obviously, we need to move quickly, we don't want to waste too much time, but an up or down vote in December doesn't seem to bode, or lend itself towards getting community involvement, as well as being able to raise a number of the questions that come up with us. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks so much. Mr. Waukes?
Superintendent Neal, members of the board.
Good evening.
Good to see you again. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the transformation plan. I know that I've reached out in different ways to you, letters and things like that, but I just wanted to share a couple of concerns in more of a public manner. First being reiterating the need to maintain a presence of a GRPS presence on the Creston campus. I think that, that north quarter neighborhood, in that building in particular, should remain occupied. Mr. Clark offered suggestions of, you know, why Central? Why are we saving Central? In the same sense, we've also discussed about the northeast middle, where City is currently located, as a potential building to shut down. But the community, including the Creston Neighborhood Association, and even tonight, the mayor, in his monthly question and answer, made similar comments about the need to maintain a presence at that building, how it's a key vital part of that neighborhood. My second concern is the athletics. The proposal to put a GRPS east and west, looking back at the strategic plan, which is one of the pieces and elements of this transformation plan, one of the goals out of that, that came out of that was to increase the participation, align the athletic programs with the schools, including the feeder programs, to get more kids interested, moving up SAF, just, you know, starting soccer and cross-country for the elementaries. So we're trying to get those kids to move up and through and gain that sense of school pride, and now we're proposing splintering away any sense of a school recognition and going to an east-west system, you know, where will that be? Who will be included? How does that help our participation? You know, I'm looking at, the numbers here, we're looking at $235,000 savings in the athletic program, but it's going right up against one of our goals that we stated in our strategic plan, that's a year or two old. So I see that that's counterproductive. And last is, I just see the plan, you know, offers many choices at a secondary level that we're proposing. However, are we doing enough to really create options for families to move into Grand Rapids? Are we creating these choices and these clear paths that we see that we can, we can attract a young family to stay versus looking to outside to move and, you know, see that path that through an elementary into a middle school year, into a secondary option? We need to create these full paths, so we have these families staying versus cannibalizing our current programs, just to offer a few more options. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Charneece and Shantice. Have you ever given public comment before?
No.
Let me give you a little bit of information. Which one are you, Shantice or Charneece?
Shantice.
Shantice. Okay, so with public comment, we give you three minutes to share whatever it is that you want to share. You can ask questions or just share concerns, or give a positive update, whatever it is that you'd like to share. And then we have a warning sign when you'll be one minute before the timer will go off. During the time that you're speaking, as you may have noticed, we're not engaging and interacting with conversation, we're just really listening at this time. But whatever your concerns are, we definitely would take them seriously, and someone would follow up with you if there is a need to do so. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
The floor is yours. And speak in the microphone for us, too, because it's being recorded, and it will be on television on Channel 27, if you want to show someone later.
My name is Shantice LeGrom. I'm a current Creston senior right now. So I guess the big question is, why Creston and not Central? Or why not combine City with Creston? Or since Union is overpopulated, why not take some of those kids and put it in with Creston? I think that the, it's going to be a big problem, because like, for the students that do live in the Creston district, like, where do you expect us to go? Some of the parents don't like Ottawa, or some of the other public schools that you probably want us to go. So it's like, it's a big thing, and then other school districts aren't accepting us. So it's like, it's, like, what do you expect? And also, like, with the whole sports teams thing, I don't, I don't think that will work out at all, because like, a lot of kids go to sports to like, get off the streets or stuff like that, like, and if they don't get accepted into the east or the west team, like, I think that'd be a big problem also. I guess that's pretty much all that I had to say.
Okay.
And then like, busing, busing is a big problem, because like, if we do want to go to Iowa, or we do want to go to Union, like, the bus transportation is very terrible right now. So, I mean, I guess it's just something to think about. Thanks.
Thank you so much for sharing and coming out.
Thank you.
Charneece, the floor is yours. You heard all those specifics, right?
Yes.
Okay.
My question is basically what my sister just asked you. I love Creston, I'm a current sophomore there. I feel like I want to finish my, my term there, like, I didn't get to experience the things that my sister did, and I would like to do that. Another thing is, I don't agree, I do agree with my sister with moving City in, I think it's a good idea, because City, they are, are part of our sports team anyway, and I think it would make more sense. Like, I love Creston, Creston has always been there. We need one school that will accept anybody for who they are, because City is hard to get accepted there, and Creston is that school where kids turn to, like, well, they'll accept me for who I am, and not for my grades or anything. They'll help me improve that, they'll help me get where I need to go, so that maybe later on, I can get accepted into a school like City. So we need that school there for kids who don't have a lot of opportunities for academics. We need some, one school to be like, I'm going to help you, guide you along the way. And another thing is, I do also, maybe closing Central and moving the Centers of Innovatives to Creston, because, like I said, Creston's a great building, and Central's not really, I've been there personally, and I don't think Central, the transportation is not really good. So I think Creston will be a great school to move those Centers of Innovatives, just an idea. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much for coming out and sharing. Any other cards? Do I see a finger? Come on down. Bring the card with you. Well, don't you look familiar? How are you? Do you, do you have your name on it? That's enough, thank you. Have a seat, Anna. Anna was my escort, I was at Creston a few weeks ago, and Anna gave me a tour and all that good stuff.
Hi, I'm a Creston High School senior, and I live in Union's district. Basically, my parents didn't want me to go to Union, because three of my older cousins dropped out from there. They sent me to Creston, and I didn't like it at first, but after about a month or two, I started loving it. The staff helps us with our grades, they stay before and after school. Joining the sports teams really helped us, like, sports teams, you're required to go to tutoring, that helps everybody with their grades. If most kids were, if it was only an east and west team, especially for basketball, football, the more popular sports, I don't think everybody would be able to participate, because even at our school, some people get cut. So I think that would increase the children in the streets, that would decrease, you know, grades. And also, our school is one of the, I believe, is one of the most high school spirited. Our spirit is coming back, we are proud of our school, even the, even the most kids from, that don't really participate in anything, to the kids that participate in everything, all of us have school spirit, we all respect each other. We are not very populated, I guess. We are not very populated, I guess, is what I've heard. But we all know each other. We all respect each other. I have never really witnessed bullying in our school, which I hear is a lot of problems at other schools. I just don't, I think there's better solutions to the money problem than we have, other than closing Creston. I think if we look enough, we can find another solution. And I think maybe even if we held the vote to close Creston a little longer, to give us time to organize and even raise money. I also believe that we just spent $1.3 million on a cafeteria. And I heard that our school, closing our school would be worth $1.7 million. So I feel like that's kind of a waste of federal tax money. I just want to let it be known that we can maybe search for other alternatives, like putting City and Creston, closing Central, other than closing our school. And again, I've been to Union, I've been to Ottawa, I've been to Central. Our gym is much bigger. I know it just got renovated a couple of days ago. We have a great pool facility. We have actually two gyms. We have a softball field in the back, football field across the street. I believe that maybe, like, other than Ottawa, other than Union, we have the best sports facilities, so I think that would be going to a waste. And just everybody around Creston area, I know a lot of kids.
You finished that sentence.
I know a lot of kids come from the Ottawa district, and that's maybe necessarily because they don't want to go to Ottawa. So I think forcing them to either go to Ottawa or Union would drive a lot of kids away from the district, which would increase losing the money.
Thank you so much. Yeah, Anna.
We are still looking for another student rep, right?
Right. Exactly. Okay, so public comment, we're done. Secretary's report?
I do. On the topic of transformation, there will be additional opportunities in the community. Those include Thursday, November 8th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Southwest Community Campus; Saturday, November 10th, from 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. at Ottawa Hills; Thursday, November 15th, from 6:00 to 8, 6:00 to 7:30 at Union; Friday, November 16th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. right here in this auditorium. If you have any comments, call our Transformation Plan Action Line at 819-1200, or email communications@grps.org. And your input is extremely valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
At this time, I would like to ask Julie Davis to come forward.
You're going to switch the two reports, correct?
Yes, I'd like to just.
Good evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, President O'Neil, members of the board. We have with us this evening Jeff Egberts and Katie Yang from our independent audit firm of Plant Moran. They joined us at the October 29 Finance Committee meeting, where we went into some detail with our annual audited financial statements. This evening, what we're going to share with you is a graphical presentation, along with, I believe Mr. Egberts will walk us through a letter that's directed to the Board of Education. And at the end, we're going to open it up and welcome any questions that you may have. But before Plant Moran starts, I would just like to acknowledge the members of the Business Office team, for both current and former, because we have some who have left us and went on to either different roles in the district. The audit is really a culmination of a year-long process that ensures that we're in compliance with state and federal laws, as well as our board policy. It's a year-long process that also ensures we're properly accounting for our public resources. So I would like to ask those who are in attendance to please stand when I call your name. Melanie Braidaway, Rhonda Cribs, Jamel Embry, Katie Carpenter, Scott DeLing, Fred Finn, Chris Fritz, Melissa Griffin, Dave Grundeich, Cheryl Holly, Sarah Kunin, Marlene Mesher, Karen Richter, Barb Savick, Bill Shefferly, Tracy Socia, Jen Teaker, Liz Thompson, Dave Vanderwal, Sherry Van Tynen, Chad Yerrick, and Sherry Zurich. I'm very proud of our team. They do a great job. There is a lot of hard work. It is very detailed work. And so when, when we view things and we see them at such a big level, there's a lot of work and detail that goes into that. So I would like to congratulate my team for another successful year. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Plant Moran. We do have a presentation, so President O'Neil and Superintendent Weatherall Neal, you may want to move to the side.
Thank you and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here again to talk about the audit that we just finished. As Julie mentioned, we did meet with the Finance Committee last week and spent a little over an hour going through much of the detail that you find in the financial statements and some of the other deliverables. So this evening, we'd like to do maybe a shorter presentation. And what we've done is created some graphs to sort of pull out the financial highlights for the year. Before we jump into that, though, I do want to talk just for a minute about the audit and the audit process. And as Julie mentioned, the audit is really a process that happens throughout the year, and it starts with your folks in the Business Office doing their terrific work that they typically do. Formally, we start on our end in April or May, when we meet with the administration to talk about things that may have happened during the year that should affect the scope of our audit. We come back in the early part of the summer to do the first phase of our audit work, and then we come back in the latter stage of the summer, in early fall, to do the year-end phase of our audit work, where we do things like third-party confirmation and examining all kinds of supporting documentation to support the financial statements that are the districts. And I think it's important to remember that these are the financial statements of the district. They're the representation of management, they're not Plant Moran's financial statements. But you've engaged us, Plant Moran, as independent auditors to render an opinion on the financial statements. And so the first thing I want to mention tonight is, and you'll find this on the first page behind the table of contents, if you'd like to look at it. And if not, I'm going to paraphrase what our opinion says. But it states that, "In our opinion, the financial statements do present fairly, in all material respects, the financial condition of the district in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles." So in the audit profession, that's what we refer to as an unqualified opinion or a clean opinion. It's the highest level of opinion that you can receive. And in this case, unqualified is indeed a good thing. So that's the financial statement audit opinion. With that, we'll move into the graphs. As I mentioned, we've attempted to pull out a few of the numbers that we think are relevant to look at as we wrapped up the year. So the first graph is assets at June 30. And on the left-hand side, the pie represents the district-wide full accrual financial statements. And those assets total $275,000. Biggest part of that pie is the big purple piece, and that is the capital assets net of depreciation. On a district-wide full accrual basis, you do account for fixed assets and depreciate them, similar to what you would, what you would see in a commercial enterprise. Sort of working our way around the pie, the next largest chunk would be cash and investments, about $40 million. And then receivables of just north of $26 million, most of which is state aid yet to be received after the end of the year. On the right side is assets only in the general fund. So same sort of look, only in this case, it's on a modified accrual basis. And again, the largest piece of the pie is cash and investments of, just short of $29 million at the end of the year. And then accounts receivable of roughly $26.1 million. Again, state aid making up most of that, just short of $21 million. Total assets in the general fund, $70,520,000 at the end of the year. And page two is the other half of the balance sheet. So on the left side, again, on the full accrual basis, it's liabilities and net assets on a district-wide basis. And the largest section of that portion of the balance sheet would be long-term liabilities or long-term debt of $147 million. So that, that represents bonds, bonds payable and capital leases and other long-term liabilities of that nature. Moving around to the, we'll go in counterclockwise fashion. The next largest liability is accrued salaries and fringes. So those would be the accrual, accruals typically for summer pay and other accrued wages and related benefits that exist at June 30, yet to be paid after the end of the year. Accounts payable, just north of $14 million. And then other liabilities of roughly $17.7 million. On the right side is the same presentation, but again, this is only for the general fund. Accrued salaries and fringes be the largest liability at the end of the year, again, about $21.5 million as the end of the year. Other liabilities of $12.6 million would be predominantly deferred revenue and inter-fund balances. Accounts payable of about $14.3 million. And then fund balance in total is roughly $22 million, and that's broken into three different categories. The first being non-spendable, which represents investment in inventory at the end of the year and prepaid's. Assigned fund balance of $8,452,000 would be the budgeted use of fund balance in next year's budget. So in the 1213 current budget, $8,452,000 use of fund equity is what's in that budget. The remainder is unassigned of $12.6 million. Slide three, a little less busy and a little easier to, to read, which is good. So revenue in total, and again, this is for the general fund only, revenue in total was $211,779, compared to last year of just north of $216 million. So decrease of about $4.5 million year over year. The thing that's striking about this pie is the portion that is attributable to state revenue. So as you're all well aware, very dependent on the state of Michigan for revenue dollars. And the, the mix is very, very similar year over year. Couple tenths of a percentage swing between the different categories, but very constant year over year in terms of federal, local and state. On page four, again, a pie graph that breaks out expenditures. Expenditures in 2012 were $209 million compared to just north of $212 million in 2011. The largest orange piece of the pie is direct instruction and related support activities. And there's a narrative list on the left-hand side for what's, what's included in each piece. This past year, that was 88%. And the other district expenses, which are listed down below, comprised 12% of total district expenditures in the general fund for 2012. Page five, it's a historical comparison of fund balance, looking back to the 2012 year. So fund balance for this past year increased by a little over $2.6 million. Measured as a percentage of expenditures, which includes the transfers out, and I just wanted to mention, this does also include the, the grant funds that you separate internally throughout the year. But at the end of the year, fund balance was just north of $22 million in total. As I mentioned earlier, you have assigned fund balance, which is what you're budgeting to use in this current fiscal year, which is just north of $8.5 million. Measured as a percentage of expenditures, that number is 10.5% this year compared to 9.13% last year. And you can see the three years prior as well. Page six, this is a comparison to other nearby school districts, which is always interesting. Now, just point out, this is as of June 30, 2011. Reason for it being 2011 versus 2012 is the 2012 information isn't available yet. So this is the most recent information to compare to. Grand Rapids is the very middle block E, which was 9.13% last year. And as sort of a benchmark, the statewide average last year was just shy of 9%. And I will point out that that number includes Detroit Public Schools. If Detroit Public Schools was not included, that number would be a couple of percentage points higher. So it'd be a little bit, little bit north of 11%. And then finally, this, this is a new slide that we included that actually Julie helped to compile the data for. But this is a listing of districts that were in deficit as of June 30, 2012, or 2011. So again, the 2012 information is not available yet, but just to sort of provide a little perspective as to what's going on elsewhere in the state. So it's broken down by size of district, and you can read the, the numbers on, on the chart. But there are 20 districts, less than 1,000 students that were in deficit last year. 19 between 1,000 and 5,000 students. Excuse me? Four districts between 5,000 and 10,000, and then two larger districts that were, were Just real quickly, wanted to point out two other deliverables that you have. One is the audit on federal awards, and I'm not going to spend your time tonight going through that. I will point out that the district last year had federally funded grant dollars just short of $55 million, so about $54.9 million worth of federally funded grants. As part of our audit, we do do some testing of the compliance requirements and how well the district did in terms of meeting those requirements. We go through a process where we select certain programs that we do some extra work on, those are called the major programs. And we had excellent results again this year with no findings or question costs. So kudos again to your team for doing a good job managing the federal grants. And then finally, the last document that you have is a letter, is captioned "Report to the Board of, Board of Education." I would encourage each of you to read it at your leisure. Just a couple of comments on it. It's broken into two sections. The first one talks about results of the audit, and so this is mandatory post-audit communication that we, as auditors, are required to provide to, in the audit profession, the term is called "those charged with governance." So here at the school district, that would be you as board members. So all the things that you'll see in those first five pages are the mandatory items that we're required to comment on. And there really was nothing of, of note to point out in those various sections. The second section of the letter, however, is informational items. And so I'll just call your attention to that. And again, I'd encourage you to read it in detail. Much of it involves reminders of things that are going on at the state, some things that are happening funding-wise and whatnot. One of the very first items, though, deals with fund balance. So we've talked about fund balance. You've seen some graphs that talk about where fund balance is, both this year and historically. We had both raw dollars and percentages. And as I mentioned, this past year, fund balance did modestly decrease. And then at the end of the year, fund balance was roughly $22 million, about 10.5% of expenditures. So our comment, though, is a reminder of why it's so critically important to maintain a healthy level of fund balance. And some of the reasons that we've listed are maintaining fund balance at the right level does give the district the ability to meet unforeseen circumstances, state aid proration, expenditures that may pop up that you didn't anticipate, without having to abruptly impact current level of programming for the year. When we looked at the, some of the graphs previously, a reminder that you don't get all your state aid, your money from the state in the current fiscal year. You get much of it after the year's already done. You receive payments in July and August. School doesn't end in August. It ends in June. School doesn't end in August, it ends in June. So funding does not line up in lockstep with the expenditures of the district. So again, just a reminder that it is critically important to have fund balance at a proper, appropriate, healthy level. And I know that's been something that both this board and past boards and past administrations and this current administration have done a lot of hard work to make sure that that topic gets the right level of attention. So congratulations for doing some of the hard things that were required to be healthy and not be on that list that we showed you earlier of districts that aren't so healthy. One other item I want to point out, we mentioned it at, at finance. It's back on page 13. And we mentioned it also in your, in your footnotes. There's a footnote on this topic, but there's a couple of accounting standards that are coming up that will apply in future years. One of them is GASB 68. GASB is an acronym for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It's the, the governing body that sets accounting standards for all governmental entities. Grand Rapids Schools is a governmental entity that this would apply to. This standard would require governmental entities, including GRPS, to potentially recognize the liability for unfunded pension costs. So as a participant in the MIPSers program, you would share in a portion of that unfunded liability and, and would have a, an obligation on the full accrual financial statements to recognize whatever that prorata, underfunded portion of that MIPSers liability is. So that, that will apply in the June 2015 year, so it's a couple of years down the road. But as time goes on, I'm sure you'll be hearing more about it. So I wanted to call your attention to that one. With that, any, are there any questions that I could answer?
Any questions for Jeff and Katie? Yes, Dr. Randles.
I had highlighted that because I think it is an important, your GABSE, how did you pronounce it? Your acronym?
GASB.
GASB, thank you. 68. And you know, that the, I'm sure you guys had talked about it in finance and then legislative committee-wise in terms of our new committee structure, making sure we keep on top of that. Great way to bankrupt a, a district by, on paper, right? And then the other piece, we highly recommend the school district obtain the checklist from MDE website. And I'm just confirming that this was talked about at the finance committee. Self-assess their process on the types of items which MDE focused on. Page 12 on the report. Because it seemed like there were a few things that you outlined that we need to make sure we're doing well. I'm sure Dr. Fomp's got it going there on the finance committee, though.
Well, we, we did discuss the, we asked specifically what that meant for the district once they changed the accounting standards to include the MIPSers liability. And if I remember correctly, there was a concern that it may perhaps change our rating with standard emporers, but not likely. I mean, maybe you want to repeat your answer to me when we ask that.
So that, that's one of the questions that often pops up is, well, gee, won't that make us look worse? And could that affect our bond ratings? And I, I don't work for a bond rating agency, so I'm only speculating. But my, my strong suspicion is, I think they are acutely aware of the fact that this district, as well as every other district in the state, participates in the MIPSers system. And I think they're very aware of what that means and what the current financial status of that, that system is. So I, I doubt that actually quantifying and recording that number on a financial statement is going to change their perspective about the financial health and the relative ratability, if that's a word, of, of GRPS, so.
And I think something that we talked about is when they would do a ratings review, there's an interview. I'm sorry, it's kind of. There is an interview. So that is a question that has come up in the past when we're talking to those agencies. So they do recognize, they know that that is out there. So we're hopeful that it wouldn't be harmful to our rating.
Any other questions? There being none. Thank you very much, Jeff. And thanks, Katie, for coming.
Thank you.
You did a really good job smiling, Katie.
Thanks for being here. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
So now we're both to the transformation update. I'm hoping that some of the questions that came from Phoenix and Anna and some of the other students that spoke and Waukes and Clark, that they could possibly be answered because I think they were similar questions from last time, so.
And if, I'll ask that John and Ken come forward. And if we don't answer the questions, we will take the information back and answer it Monday.
Okay.
Right away. So, and we may answer them in this presentation.
Yeah.
This is a presentation. Well, not really.
Not anything formal?
No, no.
Just enough.
Yeah, we wanted to keep it kind of informal. I think, you know, this is going to be an ongoing process. We are in the process of really creating a, an extensive frequently asked questions document. We're not quite done with it. You know, we, we got hit pretty hard with a lot of questions and a lot of comments. And so we took, what I'm going to talk about tonight is really a compilation of what we're hearing the most from, what are the questions that include what you raised last Monday, as well as what we heard at the two staff meetings. We had two all-staff meetings, one at Creston, one at Union, as well as the first big community meeting that was at Creston last week, Thursday. This also includes all the Facebook, Twitter comments we're getting, the Action Line phone calls, as well as the emails and so on. I'm sure, and you as board members have also been forwarding us some questions. So it's a pretty extensive list. Certainly, we're probably missing a few things, but we thought we'd walk through it now, knowing that this will be put into a print version that will be posted on the website and available for you to review and for us to update as we go.
Is there a recording of those meetings or a transcript?
Absolutely. We are videotaping everything. Staff meetings and community meetings. The community meeting, I believe, is already up on the website. It'll also, on GRPS.org. It's also airing on cable channel 27. The staff meetings, we started, I know it's on info hosts because those were really aimed at staff largely, but there's nothing in there that's. But the, the staff, student, parent, staff, community meetings are all public. Those are open to the media and everyone, whereas the staff meetings are really just with staff. So to start, I think it's start, we're going to start with just first, what are the top concerns? You know, if, if, and this is not a, by any means, a, an accurate assessment and ranking it, but if we go by the most calls, the most activity, the most questions, number one, of course, is the Creston closing.
Why Creston?
Why Creston? Where would the students go? Would this destabilize the neighborhood? Why not looking at closing Central instead of Creston? What about city moving into Creston and allowing it to grow? How would the attendance area boundaries be redone? And, and what are the options that the kids will have? And I'll get into those answers in a little bit. I'm going to first just go through the concerns. The second one that's got the most activity was school uniforms. Now, what's interesting is this one largely has come out of City High Middle School, where there's a petition that's being circulated. The cost question, the implementation question, and what would be, what are they going to look like? What kinds of uniforms would they be? Third one would be the location of the special ed programs. And this includes a little bit of what we heard earlier tonight in the Polhi program. Where would that be located and how would we do some of those, those relocations? The K-8 at Oakley, the merging of Mayfield. Fourth one is really the Kenosha Preschool University. When you're closing all the smaller sites, you know, what does this mean? What's the impact particularly for those northern families that will have more time on transportation? Again, we'll get into that in a little bit. Colville closing has got a, a little bit of spark, but not as much as I think we anticipated. I think the main question is kind of why? Where would the kids go? How would they be split up on their attendance area boundaries? The cost to reopening stocking? And where would the stocking kids go to middle school? These are some of the general questions. And again, I'll get into answers here in just a little bit. How's the staff impacted? I think that was what we heard most from the staff is what does this mean? Especially for those schools that are looking at a turnaround where as part of that model, 50% of the existing staff can, cannot return to the school. And that's, I mean, this is all done based on state law and what our collective bargaining agreements. I mean, it's as simple as that. And that's so one, we're going to also not have a lot of details on that, really until the board votes, till we know what the full plan is. We have done these before, but that's what we heard most from staff. On the excitement side, I think that's important to talk about. What are we, there's a lot of great buzz. In fact, I think the, the general feel has been a fair amount of optimism and excitement. Obviously, there's the angst of closing any school, and we all feel that, certainly with a big high school, and that, that, that brings back generations of families. But what we've heard, particularly from some of the, the neighborhood leaders and elected officials and others, is some excitement in how this is taking to reinvest in what is working. And so that message resonates. The mayor had a very, has a great letter that he's including in the We Are GR newspaper, and again, talks about what the city had to go through with their transformation effort. So I think people generally get the why we're doing it. I think they're wanting to know more details and what went into the thought process. So most exciting, probably the most calls we've already got, Stocking Elementary. And it's that, that our, our friends on the west side, the elected officials, the West Grand Neighborhood Organization, we've already started getting a lot of phone calls with encouragement and supporting it. The IB Arts would probably come in a not-so-distant second. Reinvestment in the themes, I think there was a lot of excitement. People said, yes, this makes sense. We've disinvested in our best programs. Why would we do that? We need to be reinvesting in them. The other one, and this one really spiked after last Thursday, was the potential for City High to move into the Creston building or some other type or Centers of Innovation, possibly. But the City High definitely got the most comments, the most calls, and, and, and even at the public meeting, there was a lot of testimony saying, why don't you think about repurposing Creston? I think there is still some who, I'll come back to that later. The planned growth options, people like the idea of, of looking at Blandford Zoo, Southwest, Frost, the public museum concept. Again, there's a lot of questions as to how we do this, where we would do it, how would we pay for it? Historically, black colleges and universities of Ottawa has got a lot of buzz, particularly within the African-American community and the advocates there. But really, in general, I think people see the value of what we're trying to do there and the very intentionality that's associated with that kind of dual enrollment college partnership. And then the Ford K-8 theme, there's a lot of people who, who really know the Southeast Academic Center. They remember it. And so we hear that from mostly more of the old schoolers than the new schoolers, but, but they remember it. They like this concept of single gender. They want to understand and know more about it. And so those were kind of the top concerns, as well as what's most exciting. I'll just kind of, kind of run through some of the key questions, and, and we've kind of lumped them in different areas. Under the closures, why is the district closing only two priority schools? This was actually a board question. And it's, it's actually kind of three with an asterisk because Campaw Park and Shawnee are both on the priority schools list. That's the lowest 5% list, and they are being proposed for closure. Gerald R. Ford is on the federal 5% list. And so while that's not on the current state list, that is still was ranked within those percentages. And so technically, that is a closure and a repurpose. The, the, it's also important to note that as we looked at the overall plan, we are mid-stream on implementation of the school improvement grants where over 24 million dollars has been invested. And so Elger, Westwood, Union in particular, those were three, and Ottawa Hills have seen those investments. You know, the member, the first year, we really didn't get to implementation until near the end because we didn't have agreement until the spring. And so while we're technically in year three, we're really more like in year two, you've got some strong, vibrant new leadership. You have some new teams in these buildings, and there's some further opportunity for growth. So I think that's part of what went into the, the thought process, is we do have some transformation occurring already. We have implementation that will take a little bit more time. And really, the teams are getting layered on now and are probably tightening up more than they ever have. And again, this, this plan intends to go big and then to stabilize. And so part of the challenge has been those schools have not had a chance to stabilize as much. So we do a little mixture of closures, as well as implementation of either a repurposing or some type of turnaround or transformation model. The biggest question, of course, and I should have said this one first, is why Creston? That is the question of the day that everyone gets into. And I think what we heard from the students and others, there was an attempt to really point to the academics and some suggestions that, you know, Creston is somehow doing dramatically better than the other schools. And they, they turned to that as, as a real point of, of question that came out, particularly on Thursday. And I, first and foremost, it's remembered, it's important to remember, we had seven criteria. Academics was one of them. But we looked at enrollment. We looked at the infrastructure. We looked at building capacity. We looked at best practices. All of those things were, were factored in when you looked at the high schools. When you look at, actually, Ottawa Hills on the state's top-to-bottom list actually ranks higher than both, both Creston and Union. Not by much, just a few percentage points, but that's a little known fact that I think a lot of people aren't aware of. You know, Ottawa did meet their AYP for a couple of years. They've seen gains. They were ranked by the Mackinac Center along with Creston from their academic growth. We come back a lot to, when you lined them all up and you really looked at the numbers and you looked at all seven criteria, it came back to what Superintendent Neal really reiterated on Thursday night, is the capacity issue and the attendance and the enrollment issue. You have both Ottawa and Creston are less than half-full. They are empty buildings, virtually empty buildings. But when you look at where the students are attending, where they're coming from, 89% of the students that go to Ottawa live in the southeast side. They are neighborhood, that's a neighborhood school, whereas only 44% are coming from the Creston area. And if you were to take Grabsept out of that, because those Grabsept kids are coming from all over, that's 200 of the 600 students, you really have an even smaller number that, that we're talking about from that northeast side where they're choosing that school. So you, those were key factors in this. This, as we've said in even in the media, this could split, could be split a couple different ways. But the reality is, Union High has a large number of students, 1,300, that are attending. It is a fast-growing area of town from an enrollment and from just a general population. So remember, those were all factors that came into how and why Creston made the list as opposed to one of the others.
So John, let me just ask the question about Central because when, I believe it was in the presentation last week, Creston was in between Ottawa Hills and Union as it relates to capacity. Central's numbers were not a part of that chart. So I think, I think we need to talk about the value in the building at Central High because I think people may not understand why that's of importance. And I think that's why the decision about maintaining Central is part of this discussion. And absent of that, people just wonder why, why fill that building when you have others? So I don't know which, which of the two of you would want to speak to that, but I think it needs to be shared.
I will first take that. When I looked at the Center of Innovations for Central High School, the Health Science, there are over 300 students enrolled in that program. And you will recall that during the past few years, past couple of years, we have slowly moved out of Central High as a high school. And that is the reason that those numbers have gone down. We were very intentional about moving, closing that out as a high school. We also have the other program there that we moved a couple of years ago, which is a mandatory program in order to grow that program. So we currently have two programs that we left there at Central, knowing that we would use that campus. The other is to bring the other Centers of Innovation to that location. It allows easy access for everyone. The partners are right downtown. We have Spectrum. That is a building that in the future, for Grand Rapids Public Schools, we do need to maintain a presence in downtown Grand Rapids Central City. The programs located at Central would be easily accessed by everyone in this community as it is located right in the middle. So that is one of the reasons for maintaining Central. And the proposal was to leave Central there so that people would have easy access.
And then there is also the dual enrollment and all of the.
Absolutely. Everything right there with the college.
Community college.
Community college.
And this plan's focus on investing and expanding and dual enrollment opportunities. And these, the students would literally be able to walk down the hill to take classes at GRCC. And so again, that central proximity, the high value of that campus, the accessibility, you know, the transportation, that is a central hub there. You will also be seeing the bus rapid transit running around that neighborhood as well. And so that's another little X factor, and that actually could make it even more accessible, particularly for those kids on the south side of town. So there, there's a lot of factors that went into it.
Jane, did you have a follow-up question?
I just have a follow-up comment. I think when we talk about closing Central, people think the building is closed. So I think it's, we understand what that means. Closing Central High's comprehensive high school is what we closed. We didn't, the physical building is still open and still has students. So I think we confuse people because people wonder, why are, why are we?
Wasn't it closed already?
Yeah, wasn't it closed already? I don't get that.
Right.
Mo?
Yeah, I have a couple of them.
Ms. Slade?
Mo is fine.
Casual.
I have a couple of questions. One, how many actually are at Central in the Montessori program? And how many are expected to be there? Is there a estimate there? It seems to me that's a very small program at this point.
There's 400 total right now between HST and Grand Rapids Montessori. And that's the Grand Rapids Montessori High School, not the pre-K.
But how many are the Montessori kids?
There's about 40 of those students, I believe, in the high school.
The middle school is in that building as well.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So there's 40 kids there?
There's 50 in the middle school.
So there's 90 kids from Montessori in there?
There's 50 in grades nine through 12. So about 100 are-
Ninety to 100, huh? How many would be there if we moved the other Centers of Innovation there?
It's about 700.
So altogether, between the current Health Science, Montessori, and the other COIs, we're going to have 700?
Approximately 700.
Okay, another question I have is, how many, when I went to the Creston public, yeah, the other day, I was struck by the way with the enthusiasm of those kids. I mean, it was really, it was really heartfelt that how much they care about their school. And I wondered how many kids who are currently at Creston, in just the regular Creston High School, are coming from Ottawa and Union Districts. I don't know if you can do that off the top of your head or anything, but I'm interested in that. I heard some of that from those students, that they prefer to come to Creston. And that's the one that I'm having some speciality that I still have.
I agree. I don't know the numbers for Union, but for Ottawa, there's about 130 students of the 400, of the total 600. So some of those students are Grabsept students, the 130. But I don't know the comprehensive. But we can find that.
It'd be interesting to know that because it sounded like there were a number of families who have chosen-
Absolutely.
-to move their kids to Creston.
Absolutely.
That would have been in Ottawa. And I don't know what that number is for Union or for Ottawa.
I don't think it's quite 50%, but if you, and you'll see the map with the dots. Their dots are all, are really between, it looks almost 50-50 between northeast and southeast with a few sprinkles on the northwest. But we can get that, that exact answer.
Dr. Randles?
Was that it?
Ms. Slade? Okay.
They keep occurring though.
Is he done with his presentation or did we interrupt?
Well, I think because of the nature of it, I think because this topic, let's try and get all of the Creston-related, you know, questions in.
Some of these are questions that are already in here as well.
Yeah.
What is the capacity for Central?
1660.
1660, okay. And then to what extent would the COIs use the dual enrollment? I'm under the impression they have sort of an extensive curriculum. And so would that be really a significant option for them?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, most of their models have, particularly for their junior and their senior year, the focus is to provide either advanced placement, dual enrollment, internships, and job shadowing. So their proximity to downtown is actually ideal because there would be more of the walkability, whereas if you're out in 80, you're out at Union or you're out at Ottawa, that's, those are more residential areas and not commercial business district areas. And so they're, just that proximity and that kind of pooling of the innovation will provide opportunity for those students. And it certainly make it more of an enhancement, if you will, for their junior or senior year in particular.
And then some of the students brought up moving COIs to Creston on the Plainfield Road. Would the bus system still be fairly accessible in that regard also?
Absolutely. Yeah, the rapid, and that was, I know there was a comment made that, you know, the transportation is bad, or, but the rapid provides the transportation for all of our high school students. By and large, I have not seen or heard a complaint in quite some time. You know, are the buses sometimes running a little bit late? I'm sure that does happen. And there are some dedicated routes. That's part of how they support our schools. So there may need to be some slight adjustments, but not much if anything.
Following up on that then, I think, and if we're anywhere around town, when the high schools get out, probably what they're referring to is capacity issues. You know, they do have to wait for buses at those times. And then another issue is sort of linking. So if there are students at Creston who then would have to go to Ottawa for the East Grand Rapids team, or whatever we're calling it, if there's some interconnection, otherwise, you know, it's, it is quite a jaunt to go to the hub and then to find the connecting route to Ottawa. So, and I've raised this issue, you know, do we have a sports bus? Or, you know, does the rapid work with us in regard to sports bus or after-school something bus to get students where they need to go in a more timely fashion? Practice is done by the time, you know, you've gotten to the other location. I know it's a challenge for the city, the Creston kids, or, you know, wherever.
Ms. Slade, and then Mr. Ross?
I have a couple of other questions that I don't want to be insulting to anyone.
Thanks for the warning.
Well, my point is, I wonder if we have had any input from realtors, business financial people, and I mean, I don't want to be offensive to our staff. Excellent job. I don't mean that at all. You know, we come from a school, education, finance mentality. And I think it may reassure some people.
That's a good idea.
It would reassure me if we had some input from the public who are experts in those fields. And I'm not talking necessarily about the funders or a lot of money. I'm talking about people who do that for a living who could say, you know, this building, you're not going to be able to, you know, or business-wise, what does this make sense financially? I just think it would be helpful, certainly to me, but I think perhaps to others, to say, hmm, can we take a look at this outside of our school?
Good idea.
Yeah, if I could give a little bit of a shout out to our good MLive reporter, Monica Scott. She actually did a story, interviewed local developers, and asked them questions about Creston and others. And I think the moral of the story was, since the legislature has really gotten away from the brownfield redevelopment tax credits, historic tax credits, all those key tools that were used to really redevelop and renovate some of these beautiful buildings, it's becoming increasingly more challenging to turn those into condos or apartments or some other mixed use. The dynamic there, you know, when they were referencing Creston, is it is a big property? And then just regurgitating what was actually in the article, they said that that site would be a challenge because you have so many different moving parts. Now, I like, we painted kind of the picture, if you think about it, you know, it has the MVP sports-type athletic facilities. It has a 600 theater. It has, you know, a conference center-like commercial kitchen and, you know, beautiful facilities that can be turned-
All of that makes it a great school, by the way.
Right, John, by the way.
That's right. Good call. That was perfect.
He said, you know.
Walk into that.
John, you have your real estate license?
No, actually, my question was similar to Ms. Slade's. I was just curious, we had really looked at the cost or the value of Creston versus Central. I know we looked at the cost of operating Creston, but I'd like to see the cost of operating Central. And again, the value of both, and really just kind of making, even though we're about the business of education, obviously, there is some business associated with this. And I'd like to see some objective numbers in regards to value. And obviously, the cost deal is pretty set. I'm sure you already know that piece. That was it.
All right. Mr. O'Connor?
I know last time we talked about the move from City to Creston, you know, as a guy who's fought hard for neighborhoods for a long time, I really hate to see Creston leave that neighborhood just because it is such a critical opponent of the future revitalization of that neighborhood. And I know you had mentioned last time, and I don't remember exactly what the figures were, was there a break-even point in closing that City High, existing City High building, moving those kids to Creston? What's the, what's the student count or what's needed to make the numbers even?
1.2 was for that's-
The Creston side.
Yeah, the two, if you break them up, if Creston closed, it's about a 1.4 million in savings. If, if, if you closed Creston and moved City into that facility and then closed the northeast middle building that City's currently in, that's about a 1.2 million in savings. So we're actually only talking about a $200,000 difference. And that's again largely because when you're closing Creston, you're still having administrative team and more on the top side than on the teacher's side that would be impacted. Those positions would no longer be needed.
So with some potential growth opportunity for the program of City High, you could neutralize that $200,000 difference.
Well, if I can just add too, as you're about to respond, Superintendent Neal, because I think one of the students spoke to this, and I alluded to this at our last meeting, if you're going to have something housed in Creston's building, you should also maintain a traditional program, a Creston High traditional program. Because like the student mentioned, you know, there are requirements to become a City High student. And not everyone on the north side, or not everyone that's in Creston's building right now can meet that requirement. So we would still lose students if we were to only put City High middle in that building. I would like to add just a couple of things here. You, if we had City and Creston merge, that would put us at about 1,100 students. And so the programs would still fit. They could coexist in the current Creston.
So it would be two programs in one building?
It would, we would just have to figure out what would that look like, right?
In terms of administration and things of that nature.
And because it's not a building that you can split. It's not an Ottawa where there's a north house and a south house. So we'd have to figure out what does that look like? Not to say that it can't be done because I think you can do anything, but at least they would fit. So I think that is one option. The other is, we have had several people ask about moving City and Economicology to Creston's campus. And to do that, I think if we increase the number of students, we were about 80 to 100 students, then we would be at a break-even point as well. So there's a couple of options, so.
So with that first scenario, I hadn't really thought about the fact that Economicology is also in that building. So when you mentioned the 1,100, that was just the City students and the Creston students, but not necessarily considering Economicology?
That included Economicology.
So 700 City slash Economicology.
Fob, and then Randles?
I'm not sure of the format because I didn't know, like, how many questions to bring at this point, or that this was a discussion point or the rest of, but anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's a report.
Everybody's jumping in, so I'm going to jump in.
It's a report.
Okay. All right. Just, this is a little bit of a follow-up with Mo. I mean, it would be really helpful for me to see some of, I know you've given it in certain formats, but to see the breakdown of the Grabsept students, what attendance area they're coming from, and just to see the breakdown and all of that. And then I'm hoping there's some kind of, really, it would be helpful to get some kind of individual family survey as to why those not in the Creston attendance area aren't choosing their attendance areas. And whether they would be open to some of our other high school options, whether it be UProp or the COIs, or some, you know, real specificity about that so that we know we aren't leaving anyone. That was one question. But anyway, to get those breakdowns of the numbers with Grabsept and everything else.
Dr. Randles?
I'm sorry, the surveys are under development, and in fact, we expect that it should be ready for deployment by the end of the week. So that was what we heard from you last week. There was a couple of different questions around stocking and some of the other changes to see what kind of response that we-
You know, I guess related that, since there's such a significant number of students in the Ottawa Hills attendance area that are attending Creston, I think, to answer that, I think part of the transformation, we need to address, if there are validity to those concerns, what we're going to be doing with Ottawa to address those concerns. Because we need to transform Ottawa into a school of choice for those in attendance area if they're choosing Creston. And we need to address whatever concerns those may be and dispel them if they're inaccurate. So.
Dr. Randles?
A follow-up on Dr. Fob, to have locations of all the COIs, to understand where they're coming from, not just the Grabsept, but all of them would be helpful. And then I've been asking, because I've been asked, what people from City think about possibly moving? And another option that came up, and I'm just going to throw that out there, combining both IB programs more from a teacher training, utilizing, having more people together. Not saying that get rid of Economicology or the arts, but have them sort of be housed in one building somewhere to, in order to have, as, you know, the proper number of teachers and student ratio. And so if you need a physics teacher, and then they're going to have to do halftime in order to have a job, that there's not a lot of travel time if they're at two different sites. So I think that that is one issue that is interesting and financially smart to consider to have together. Share coordinator would be a legitimate use of money, et cetera.
All right, back to your list.
All right. Well, I got too into it. All right, so one of the questions was, how would Creston be reboundried? If it was to close in the attendance area, right now, our best thinking is to really cut it north to south. Since you have a large number of the existing Creston students, they would be able to be back to their Ottawa Hills attendance area with the majority of the students on the northeast side that would be going to Union High. Part of that is if you look at the quick run-up, Leonard, and the transportation and the ability to get there, that's our best thinking right now. So that's the answer to that question. Impact on class size, I'm sorry, what to do with the building and buildings, not just Creston, but the others that are being closed. And really, there is no definitive answer other than to say we are going to look at holding it, leasing it, selling it, or demolishing it. And those four options would be something that we would want to take time. I know there's a talk at the last board meeting about some of the smaller child development centers. That could be dependent on what the governor does with this preschool investment. So these options will all be on the table, but there's no definitive answer other than those four options will be considered. Impact on class size, there's a lot of talk about if we do this, what will that mean? And how will that be impacting class size? And really, the answer is that this will, we anticipate that this will actually allow for a better balancing of the schools so that we'll be able to have less splits, that you'll be able to hopefully have less have those halftime positions, those point twos, those point fours. And that it will actually create a more efficient and effective staffing and more equitable class sizes. So that balancing out, that's what we anticipate. It goes back to the real basis of the plan about how we are going to look to pool our talent and use it to layer on the support and the talent for better academic outcomes. What are the school options? That was one of the questions we heard particularly from Creston, is what, if Creston closes, you know, do I get just to go to these two other schools? And no, actually, we have quite a few options. You have UProp with small class sizes, Center of Innovation, Grand Rapids Montessori High School, the Centers of Innovation, and of course, Union in Ottawa. So the students and their families will still have a wide variety of options. And then, of course, we'll be studying as part of Phase Two, other options that may be those smaller-sized expansions of a Frost, of a Southwest, and what that would look like in the kind of portfolio of school options. So I think this plan seeks to invest and grow what's working, and it seeks to also look at what are some other options that are already being highly attractive for existing families and others that have said, we're staying with these schools like a Frost, like a Southwest, because there's something that's attractive about the theme. There's a quality there that is something we should look at replicating or expanding.
Dr. Randles has a question.
What is Union's capacity? Because you were talking about it's near full, so students will fit in to transfer over from Creston? I don't know the, you know, capacity number for Union.
67 or something, did it say?
I got it.
Okay.
It's actually at 64% capacity.
Okay, okay.
It was a capacity of 1,658. And some of these numbers, 1,066. Right now, it's showing 1,066, but I know that was as much as 1,100, 1,200. So again, it appears to be full. You have a pretty large number. Full from a, more than 1,000 kids are in that building. But from a capacity standpoint, looking at that, that's a large sprawling facility that has plenty of room for growth.
Yeah, if I can just say this, Mo, and then you can have the floor. Ms. Jolynn, when she was speaking earlier, she was talking about the capacity at the school that she's at. And I think it would be good to kind of know that formula because we've heard repeatedly how Union is busting at the seams. And then when you hear 64%, it's like, that's not, you know, that full. You know, and so I'm just curious to know how the formula is being calculated with capacity so that- You know, and so I'm just curious to know how the formula is being calculated with capacity, so that, go ahead.
We went back through this fall, or this summer, and relooked at capacity and room size, and we tried to be more accurate. One was Creston. Creston has a wide variety of room sizes that, the traditional method for a high school was to base it on 35 students per classroom.
Okay.
And that really wasn't accurate in some instances. Creston had some rooms that could only handle 15, so we tried to be more accurate in that. The maximum we calculated in any room was 30, and that's what the numbers are based on now. Some of the newer buildings, like, Union's not newer, it's 45 years old.
Relatively speaking.
Relatively. They're more stable in their classroom layout, so you have a consistency there. But basically, the max we calculated was based on 30 students per classroom, realizing that if a class has 35, it's still well within its code capacity, and maybe over our estimate of what we desire, but trying to make sure that we had a number we could live with.
So did you take into consideration, like, a POH program and, so you would have calculated those? Okay.
And we also took into account a factor of utilization of five out of six hours a day. There's going to be an hour it's not used. That was factored in. In fact, at City, because they're on block scheduling, we dropped that to 75%. Where there was a block a day, we wouldn't count a room being used. And then we also went a step further and tried to calculate, how is it being used now? Some things are in buildings that maybe aren't strictly academic. Certain programs need office space, so we took those off the max capacity to a utilized capacity.
Okay, makes sense.
Ms. Lee? I have a couple of them. We're working really hard at Union with the governance board that Superintendent has put together, and Mr. Gorman is leading us on. Union's in difficulty, and has been for three years. I don't know if I, as a parent, I would move my student from Creston to a school that's really under the gun. I mean, we want to save that school, we want to turn around. What would it do to add more kids to that building, I think would complicate what we're attempting to do there. I also, and this is not a stab at you Ken, but there's a physical structure capacity, and there's a teacher concept capacity, that's quite different, actually. I mean, I know physically, but if I'm teaching, it's a different capacity, so. But I really have questions about what we could do with Union that would hurt it. I mean, we're trying to turn that around. I think we would want to really be careful of any more impact on that building and those teachers and kids, parents. There was a question in there, but it was a statement I just.
Reverend Hoskins, and then Dr. Fahlb?
Yeah, I agree with Superintendent, or rather, President Lanier when you were talking earlier. And one student from Creston mentioned it also. Creston, the Creston students spoke about losing some students, and the pupil, per pupil funding along with it. Because as you lose those students, you lose the funding also. Superintendent Neal mentioned Creston not being split like Ottawa Hills is. So to me, it seems like it will be, or let me ask this question like this, wouldn't it be less costly to renovate Creston, as you said, like Ottawa Hills is split up? Renovate Creston to a point in order to merge the City students there with the Creston students, keeping both programs open as they are? And then having that capacity versus losing those students that are, for lack of better terminology, disenfranchised. Parents upset about that, and then the funding goes along with it. Seems like it would be less costly to renovate, pay the monies to renovate it, so you can merge both those programs in. That's the question I'd like for us to look at.
I do, I think that is definitely something to look at. I also, Mo, agree with the Union and the Creston. You know, I think, and I've been real open with this, I personally, and I know this board, and I would just like to make the statement, we are not married to this plan. We really did want to receive feedback from people in this community. I am not one to put a plan out and say that I want comments, and then have something fixed behind closed doors. I don't do that. And so I do, I take all of this to heart. And I don't think that any of us could come up with all of these questions and possible solutions without the help of people in this community. And so I do want to thank people. And it does give us room to go back and answer the questions, and look at what would it cost, and what will parents think? And then to possibly give the board another option on the, I think the 19th, I'm not real sure. I think it's the 19th of November, some of those options, so that the board can make the selection. So I do appreciate it. Great thought from both of you.
Dr. Fahlb?
Well, I just, it was an excellent question, Ms. Lanier, about the capacity. And I remember the last time we were going through school closures, it was really hard to hear these percentages, and then know your own physical experience of the building, didn't seem to match up with those percentages. I just wanted to do a shout out to Mr. Clownparents, because he really did a very thorough and detailed job of attempting to understand what our building capacities were, and to audit them. And he presented a lot of that to finance, but it might be helpful for the rest of us to get some of that, and get a little bit of that, so we have a sense of what those numbers look like, feel like, and need, so, anyway.
Thank you. Back to you, Bob.
What item number are we on now?
Number two and a half.
I used to say that. Back to you, Bob.
Questions, and you just alluded to it a little bit, is the question is, you know, if you close Creston and some of these other buildings, won't that contribute to declining enrollment? And I think, first, it is, historically, when we've done closures, we have seen dips. That's just the reality of the situation. Anytime you're closing a school or a neighborhood, that does have that impact. I think what's largely different about this, and something we're anticipating, is that this is not just closing to balance a budget. This is closing to reinvest in what's working, and to use those, to stop doing what's not working and putting money back. And so I think, you know, our hope and our belief that this plan will actually, you may see a short term dip, but the goal is to create one big movement all at once, and then stabilize. Bring certainty, bring stability, bring predictability back to the district. Because we've had churn for 10 years in a row. This slow, painful process has not allowed the changes, the reforms, the improvements to take root. This will move it all at once, but then the anticipation is, by investing in these K8s, by investing, reinvesting in themes, by exploring and hopefully eventually investing and expanding in some of these other opportunities, that will bring families home, that'll bring them back home. And we will then really be restored to a growth district, which, what a great feeling that will be, is if and when we get to that point. Frankly, you know, we've been, we've been there, done this for 10 years. I think it is pretty amazing to think that, when we had the auditors here, that we're one of very few urban districts that can truly say that we are, we're still in the black, that we do have fund balance, that we have an audit, excuse me, we have bond ratings that went from negative to stable, and that's a real testament to this board, to the leadership in this district about being good fiscal stewards. And this plan is really built on that same premise. Taking some of the money and reinvesting it, and putting the rest in the bank, and using that for future investment. There were some questions a little bit about the numbers on the northeast side when it comes to kids that are attending GRPS, not attending GRPS. We've talked with our data team, it will be challenging to really get hard numbers on the kids who live in the city but are not attending GRPS. It's not, like, easily accessible data, that would.
Isn't it a census calculation?
We have generic census data.
Yeah, and that's enough. I'm not looking for anything more than that.
Call Northview and ask them how many.
We know it's 30,000 across the city, and we know we have 18,000.
And some examples that I brought here, though, you know, we know, for example, that about 30% of Northview's, public, Northview Public School District are kids that live in the city.
How, what's the percentage?
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent of our kids are in Northview?
In the northeast end.
And they just passed their bond to grow their program?
I'm glad I don't live in Northview, I wouldn't want to be paying for that.
Nap Charter Academy is a K8, has 752 students. Again, we don't know the percentage, but we know that there's a good chunk that's from the city. The Wellspring High School is not fully grown yet, but they currently have 190, and their plan is to grow to 400. So that does have, that does answer some of the question about why Creston isn't as full, and why you're not having as much on the northeast side. In part, you have a fair amount more competition over there. If you look over on the Ottawa Hill side, you've also seen some loss to East Kentwood. So those are, those are real factors that play in, and we wanted to make sure to talk about those numbers. We had one comment or one question about why would Shawnee close? It's on a main road, and the building's in relatively good condition. And, you know, the response to that is just a reminder, it's only at 37% capacity. And I think it's about 12% of the kids that attend that school, 11% that actually come from the neighborhood. And the building is in okay shape, but it, you know, it rank in the middle as to infrastructure. But it's just, it's just, it's just an empty building, and it's on the priority school list. We already answered the question about savings. Question from Cobal that we've heard the most is where would the kids go? And that's really gonna be split between really three attendance area boundaries, Shawmet Hills. So most of the Cobal kids that are in the, the upper, around the school itself, which is just on the Upper West Side, that would largely naturally really go to Shawmet. The, and then the families that are below the hill, and on the side of the hill, they'd be really split between the new stocking attendance area and Harrison. What we've done in the past, though, we've tried to work to create options and choices for these families. So if, depending on seat availability, kind of like what we did with Harrison, with the stocking students between Harrison and Sibley, they were given a choice, again, based on seat availability.
Could I have a question?
Sorry, Ms. Lee.
How many kids from Sibley attendance area are in Cobal and Shawmet? Or are they just in Shawmet?
Great question.
You don't have to answer it right now if you don't have it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to pull that.
Because I think there was quite a large move.
It's very few, I think, too. That's more on the northern side. If I were looking, just remember the dots on the paper. Most of the Cobal students are, are.
Leonard?
North of, yeah, maybe not quite Leonard, you could probably even go to Fourth Street or one of those, kind of like where the highway is. Because Shawmet actually dips down by John Ball, and grabs a large chunk of their students from that John Ball Park area. In fact, I'm not sure the full number, but I bet it's, it's over 50% are coming from below the hill. And so they're.
But not Sibley, you think?
And Sibley's just chocked full. They've had students coming from, in fact, when we rebound reed, that was enabled to, when we last did the redistricting, when stocking was closed, we tweaked some of the boundaries, which provided for more students to go to Shawmet, because we had capacity and room at Shawmet. And so those are, those are factors that will come into the redistricting. Shifting off of the closures, unless they want to go back there, I mean, there's certainly other questions, but those were kind of the big ones.
No, shifting's good. Any other questions before we shift? I don't know, I don't know where this is going. So I don't know if this goes, this is a kind of a closure? It's a shrinkage?
How about you just ask? We'll spend too much time trying to figure it out.
Well, are you gonna discuss Sherwood at all in this?
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait till then.
Alrighty. Dr. Randles?
Just in terms of what John was bringing up about having numbers and capacity, and student, teacher and inadequate ratio, you know, and I'm not trying to rain on anyone's parade, or not in terms of Creston having still a comprehensive program there, but that will impact in terms of teachers, and, you know, if, if they can use the City teachers or something in order to have an adequate number of math teachers and AP programs and whatever available. So I think that that does become an issue in regard to the viability of having a comprehensive school there, or not.
School uniforms. The question, that was kind of the next hottest issue. You know, again, I think it's important to note that we had some reviews, particularly from the City High students that are circulating petitions. And hats off to it, student engagement, you gotta love it. But we also heard a fair amount.
For confessions, my daughter's name is on the list.
As you know, we had small group meetings with several key stakeholders. There was a, particularly a group of our Hispanic Latino leaders, as well as African American leaders, who expressed a fair amount of strong support for the uniform concept. And if you look at where most, we have quite a few, we have eight schools with uniforms already. Those students, the feedback that we're getting, and I know Superintendent Neal through her Student Advisory Council, the kids were pretty receptive to it. Certainly groups were not, but, you know, some like it. And so that was the big question that came out. The cost to parents is the big question, how much would this cost? I know Natasha and I have been meeting with different vendors to try to get an idea of what these pricings may be. But that's where Student Advancement Foundation ways to step up, to provide the funding to help kind of with the startup cost of this, if you will, and then to be able to negotiate or do some type of an RFP type process, where there'd be discounted rates based on commitments to purchasing a large quantity. You know, if you eventually, you go to 18,000 students, and you're talking pants, shirts, the whole nine yards, now we should be able to negotiate a rate that would be reasonable. And then the other one, of course.
Let me just throw this in, before we ask for philanthropic support, ask the parents to purchase uniforms for their children. They want to do it.
Much cheaper than the clothes they're buying now.
They're actually offending when they're not asked, and it's assumed that they can't afford. They take care, they're very good care of their children. You may have a handful who may not, you know, and we know who those kids are and who those families are. But let's not go ask for help when we don't need it yet.
I think negotiating discounts is very helpful for everybody.
But I think that's a very good point, because right now, if we were to ask these young people in the audience what they're paying for their clothes, they're gonna find it much less expensive to have uniforms.
Absolutely.
I can speak to that as a parent that had children at Southeast, and we had uniforms. It was a lot less expensive than going out buying the clothes that they wanted.
That's right.
I shouldn't say the clothes they want, the clothes that they normally wore.
Right, there's a difference.
And the other one was the colors of the uniforms, and how would they be selected? And that would always be a challenge and a process. I know that, you know, there, you could be done by school colors, family of schools. And there's a wide variety of ways to do it, and a lot of different options that exist. And we'll have more information to share on that. The Centers of Innovation, I think we've talked a fair amount about that already. The Kenosha Preschool University. You know, there was a question that was raised about, from staff and as well as parents, is, you know, would they all fit if we were to try to consolidate? And so the total between Wes Leonard, Ridgemore, Wellerwood, Shawnee, and then the existing Kenosha that would remain, would be about a total of 530 students in a building with a capacity of 600. It's also important to note that they'd be on altering times, halftime in the morning, halftime in the afternoon. And so you would be really utilizing the facility in a much greater capacity than it is today. And again, it also brings the pooling of the talent. We have actually had some pretty positive feedback from several of the staff who see the diagnostics, the equipment, the pooling that will go along with that. The challenge, I think, the concern we've heard, was also a little bit about whether the building was really equipped for those preschool, these young age students. And actually, you have a playground that's both preschool and elementary, and it has been functioning as an elementary school. So some of the facilities, like the bathrooms, there may need to be some minor adjustments. But by and large, those are really minimal issues in the grand scheme of things. But those are questions that are being asked, and we've heard a fair amount. The other thing we heard, obviously, the young man who spoke earlier today is POH, and where we're doing that, and I think, again, that's something that our, the special ed team has been exploring all the different options. You know, the goal is to try to determine how you keep the kids together as a family, and maintain a high level of service, and that's something that we'll continue to explore and provide further feedback. Athletics, how does it get split? This is the one, is it north-south, is it east-west? How do you do the boundaries? And at this point, we don't, have not come with a final recommendation. You know, the idea is that, even if, as I heard tonight, some conversation about, you know, if a portion of the Creston students stayed at Creston, you could still have it where there's the athletic boundary areas where students would play on different teams. You know, part of the recommendations in the Phase Two Building Improvement Plan said, we have way too many big, comprehensive buildings. In fact, we have four, they recommended going down to two. And also looking at the consolidation of athletics for various reasons, down to two. And so that still could be an option, it just may not provide the comprehensive athletics at the high schools like we do today. K8, and this was one the board asked quite a bit on Monday, why K8s? What is the academic, you wanted to see the numbers on the academics, comparing the K8s to middle schools and the elementary. For example, the, neither the MEEP scores, I think you provided, right?
Yes, they're the MEEP from fall of two thousand and eleven.
Academics, on, on the reading, MEEP for K-5 was forty-two percent proficiency. K-8, forty-five percent proficiency, and six-eight middle school, twenty-five percent. Nearly twice as, the achievement is a good twenty percent higher in K-8s than it is in the middle schools. On the math scores, very similar numbers, K-5s were at eighteen percent. K-8s were at nineteen percent, and the middle schools were at four percent. And so you see dramatic differences between the comprehensive and the K-8s. And we've said all along, the K-8 model is part of it, the reinvestment is looking at the academic benefit as well as the parents' choice.
Keaton?
So, the one thing I hear on the northeast side a lot is the people are leaving because there isn't really a good comprehensive middle school option. And I, I wanna try to understand the numbers. If we introduce the K-8 at Aberdeen, what, and potentially the K-8 at Vermont, sorry, what impact will that have on the number of kids that actually will attend Riverside? And given those numbers that I just heard, what is the plan for, what, what are our plans to change those numbers? Because those are a little scary.
First, it's important to note that those are post-new cut scores, not that that's, it was a dramatic difference. If you, for example, the old reading cut scores, instead of forty-two percent at K-5, it was at sixty-seven percent under the K-8. Instead of the new score, which is forty-five percent, it was at seventy-one. Middle schools were at twenty-five in the new score, and at fifty-one, still a twenty-point difference on the old scores. But I, I think it's important to know, the state did dramatically change how we're doing it. So you do see those numbers drop to a rate that catches your breath a little bit. But that's part of the turnaround and the reinvestment that's being done in those schools. That's part of the academic plan. Again, if you think back to what has been accomplished since January fourth, it is a total transformation that started already before this plan even came forward. And that includes the academic plan, that includes much more organized and intentional professional development. So those are things that are being done now.
So, and those same numbers, we have another slice called six-twelve. And we have several of those programs throughout our district. Is there, what's that look like? The six-twelve numbers?
We'll have to get back with you on that, I don't have those answers right offhand. I mean, really, U-Prep and City High Middle, I think, are the only six-twelve options. And City's really seven-twelve with the sixth grade, Economicology kind of hanging. So, and, and that is a test in school, so the U-Prep would be the most accurate comparison.
They're at which grade, ten or eleven?
They're six through eleven right now, they wrote a twelve next year.
That would be interesting for you to see.
The only caution there is you're talking about comparing class sizes, sixteen kids.
That's right.
That's a significant change. I mean, that's quite a difference.
But statistically, supposedly, I don't know if I believe this, class size doesn't matter, according to some research.
Trust me, it matters.
I, I believe that, I kind of
Matters.
Seems logical that it would matter.
Dr. Paul?
I don't know whether you're going to address this, but one of the things a couple of us asked at the last meeting was this sense of currently where we're expanding the K-8s, or even in our current K-8s, I know we lose a lot of students at the sixth grade. So I wonder if we're doing some kind of tracking as to where our fifth graders or our sixth graders are going now. And I know connected to that has to do, not, not always, but sometimes, it has to do with how well we're doing the middle school portion of the K-8. If parents perceive, or if they're accurate in their perception that there isn't an increased rigor and elective options, and the kind of things they're looking for, for their child entering secondary, then they leave. They, they love the school up till then, but they don't see the kind of enrichment and challenges and what they want for their child at that age. And so we have, you know, we have an exodus sometimes, I mean, not just us, other districts do as well. That's one of the challenges with a K-8, to make sure that that secondary portion is engaged. So I, I wanna sort of look at, you know, what our trends have been, whether we have the leadership capacity and whether we have those developed to that extent.
Yeah, and just, just a quick, first of all, I, we'll get you the answers on that. I know that was a question that was asked previously. You know, just kind of off the top of my head, the, you know, schools like Frost and Southwest, it's not, it's not unlikely that they lose some of the students because they go to Blandford or Zoo or to City. So you may see some of that there. I've not seen or heard that we lose them at the middle school for the, if anything, that's one of the values of the K-8.
Look great, I wanna see that. That's great, that's great, it's good to know that.
So the other question is, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Ms. Lee?
Just another question. Would, would City High, I'm gonna go back to a Creston thing a minute. Look at City High parent across me. Would City parents be okay with putting their kids in a mixed group at Creston?
I think it's a fair question. Who are you asking this question of?
You know, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm putting it out there that, I don't know how we find that out. I think it would be an interesting question.
We can survey the
We're talking about potentially moving City High to Creston. And if we left the Creston students there, or add, or whatever, we did. I mean, is, is part of the draw of City also that it's got its own place? Question. I don't know how we get at that, but that would be interesting to get feedback from City, perhaps.
We can do a survey.
Or City parents might be able to respond to that.
I mean, the one, the one comment I will have is that the majority of City students who play sports play for Creston. Or a good, a lot of kids that play sports.
So maybe that would be okay, but
So, there's already some cross-pollination. There's also been cross-pollination with some of the music programs and things of that nature. So, I'm not, I can't answer for every City High parent.
I think they do play for all Ottawa and Union.
I'm not interested in the athletics right now, I'm thinking about the actual school.
Right, but I'm, I guess what I'm saying is there's already things that those, the students from Creston and the students from City are doing together. So.
Interesting question. All right.
Well, and the current families from the COI, the two hundred that are there, you know, what has been their experience and have they been happy being at Creston? You know, I mean, I think that that's a legitimate area to look at as well, I mean
That's a large program.
That was one of the things that we heard from the students that testified on Thursday. There was a lot of talk about how GRAPsep, that, that, which at one point was a test in school, and how they saw the value of those students all together in one, two schools in one, essentially. And so at least that's what we heard from the students, they liked, they liked that. And they thought there was a value-added benefit to that.
But I also wanna make a comment, because having all of the students from the COIs in one location allows us to get those children off of computers and they can share teachers. Remember, there are two COI programs. And because they are so small, those students have not had the opportunity to experience a COI at the fullest level. And so in creating a new program, putting all of the COIs together, they can then share teachers.
Dr. Randles?
I know Mo doesn't like athletics, but at the K-8
I love athletics. Don't tell my kids that.
Dr. Paul made me think about, if we continue to do more K-8s, will students then have the opportunity to play soccer for comprehensive middle school? Or would they, I mean, some of those programs may be too small.
They can play in K-8s.
I think we already offer
K-8s already play.
Have athletics right now.
Good, just for clarification then, sure.
How many more do you have?
Because, John?
I can go real short.
John?
I'm just curious, I was just asking, I'm sorry.
Again, I
No offense.
We'll stop asking.
I think the board has asked many questions here.
Actually, I'm, I'm gonna butt in and honestly say, let's not rush this.
Absolutely.
So I'm gonna stand up for you, don't let them rush you.
No, I'm I asked a question, I wanna answer to it, how many more do you have? I think, you know, you assess at some point.
Do what you gotta do, girl, I got you.
I wasn't gonna say go fast or slow, but I do wanna know how many more do you have?
Uh, maybe ten.
Okay, okay.
I got you, do what you gotta do.
I'll combine these into, two questions into one, following in the boards. There was the question a little bit about the difference between K-8s and middle schools and the specials. And there really is not a difference, other than the K-8, you have less specials, less electives. Whereas the middle, comprehensive middle school's more traditional. The other question was question about Sherwood Park, and could we sustain comprehensive middle schools with the emergence of all these K-8s? And that was, there was a lot of talk about that, as you recall, last time. We actually, the first version of the plan looked at possibly campuses at K-8 and maintaining Sherwood Park as a K-8. As we looked at what that would have done, that would have had a negative impact on Elger. And so to break the numbers out a little bit, Ford Middle has two hundred and seventy students. We will, with a hundred and eighty of those students that are in Sixth and Seventh now, that will need to still be serviced next year. We're talking about closing that, reopening as a K-8 typically doesn't offer the same number of sections, so probably not enough sections for all hundred and eighty students, although that could be determined still. Sherwood Park, which we're recommending going from a K-8 down to a K-5 neighborhood school, has a hundred and fifty students that are in the Sixth and Seventh that would need to be placed. Elger right now has three hundred and thirty-six students, was built for five hundred and seventy-one. And so we were very sensitive to that concept in the plan is, how can you, by, by closing the Ford, there will be slots that would likely go to Elger, as there would not be enough slots in the K-8s to service all the students. And so this would help to kind of effectively balance to some degree, that's the goal behind it. That's also why we did not recommend keeping Sherwood as a K-8, or keeping, or, or including campuses and expansion to a K-8.
I will add that some of the same concern that exists for Ottawa Hills exists for Elger Middle. And so
Absolutely.
Reversing Sherwood's K-8, you know, then the question lies about where will those kids go? Will they just automatically, you know, go to Elger, or will you lose them? So, that's coming up.
You have the Dickinson K-8, you have the Gerald Ford K-8, and you have Elger and MLK K-8. So you have some very viable, attractive options.
Okay, how about all of them then? I mean, just, you know, because of where Sherwood is located, let's just be honest here.
My question is about that and also about the theme with Sherwood. I wanna get some sense of currently where those students go to high school, because I'm looking at it and I'm wondering how many of them go to Kentwood or, or go to a charter school. Because I think that goes to this question of, will they then go to our Elger Middle School? And one of the reasons, I, you know, we're expanding the K-8s and we have a K-8 there that has functioned quite highly in the past. And I was thinking about it when we were in Chicago, going over the IB curriculum there. We're also reinvesting in the theme. And that program is also, in the past, had just thrived and been a real program of recognition in Grand Rapids Public Schools with its theme. And in many ways, functioned similarly to the IB with a, with a project-based learning, with theme-centered global studies. And so I know that curriculum's there, a lot of that staff's there, we've got a real history with theme and K-8s. So I guess I'm just pushing back a little bit with the Sherwood, and convince me otherwise, I'm not saying. But I'm just pushing back a little bit with whether, you know, we've got investment with K-8 and theme there, and we're reinvesting as a whole, the district's on K-8 and theme, and I see it way out in the city. You know, I see it's on the other end of CA Frost, and it's a similar type thriving, very well-received school. Maybe we should be thinking about K-12 there at some point. I'm just throwing it out there wildly, but I'm just
That's a very good point.
Looking at our big vision for what we've seen with the district, so.
That's my same question too, because I actually received a text message asking me regarding the student at Sherwood, if I had any good recommendations about a high school charter. It's like, do text the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education, not, you know. But we had that exchange, and I think you're right to that same point. Where are they going when they graduate? And if we reduce it, where will they go earlier?
I think there's a high neighborhood
You just have to ask that question.
Area for that school too, isn't there? It's a fairly good
Most of it comes from the southeast.
No, it's not.
Around Dickinson Ford.
But I think that it lends itself to becoming
The vast majority of the students are coming from the more of that Dickinson Ford area. The other timing, another question was around timing, when will closures take place? I think people, so Phase One, with the exception of, pretty, pretty much all the closure, not pretty much, all the closures, as well as the repurposing and the initial reinvestment dollar, will happen in Phase One. So it starts planning, that's for next school year. So this plan would begin and the doors would open or close for the 2013, 2014 school year. So if the board did take, does take action on, in December, that doesn't mean we're closing a school in January. That would not be until the following school year. There was some question about whether stocking was Phase One or Phase Two. Really, Phase, it's, it's Phase One because it's tied to Coville. If you close Coville, you need to have a place for those students to go. Only reason we questioned whether or not doing that Phase One to Phase Two was the timing on, on the investments that will be necessary to have the school stocking ready by day one, which Ken and his team assure us that can be done and would be done in a timely manner.
So that's fall of two thousand and thirteen, for clarification.
Fall of two thousand and thirteen.
Keep in mind that that would require the board approving certain contracts in January. We'd be moving very quickly at that fall commitment.
Ken, what kind of issues are you facing at stocking, and what do you estimate the cost to, to do with that? It seems like there was mold issues or something, is that not anymore?
Not mold.
What is it?
It's an empty building, and the, the significant costs are going to be in ADA upgrades, restrooms, potentially an elevator, the kitchen is gone, we would have to replace that. Besides the general cleanup of the building to make it presentable. But most of it is, is in ADA and making acceptable facilities, sanitary facilities for the students.
And the press hack was three million?
That's my number.
You have another one?
Mrs. Neal goes for two million, we're somewheres in between.
So it's two point five million.
Two point five right now.
She's gonna work on a weekend.
Please know that Ken is the expert though.
Ken's like, that's a little number, but
And that, that's a good timing, and to the other main question about timing is why December nineteenth? Why, why do we need to have a vote and action on the plan, the full plan, all at once? All these dots are interconnected. And so that is why we're asking for an up or down on the whole plan all at once. And that's also why we're asking that be done on December nineteenth, because in order to implement this, that's one thing Superintendent Neal, we've heard loud and clear from our staff, we're big in ideas and short on implementation. And if you think back to some of the
Did you say that before?
You've said, that's what came through in the listening. This is one where, if you look back to when we've done some of these closures in the past, these actions didn't happen till late spring. And so in order to implement this plan, we need to get going on literally the day after you vote on December nineteenth.
Ms. Keaton?
Or seventeenth, excuse me.
So, there, there's a rumor in this community that the plan, as it was presented, needs to be accepted in its entirety as presented. And I wanna be really clear, that that is not accurate. We wouldn't be holding community meetings and getting feedback if that was the case, because that would be way too much time spent for a useless purpose. And I don't believe that Mrs. Neal would want people to speak in vain. So I wanna be really clear, and especially, I hope that some of my colleagues that call me regularly are listening to this meeting tonight, that we are accepting feedback. And there will be some tweaks to this plan before we vote in early December, or mid-December. So it is worth coming to these meetings, it is worth viewing, suggest, making suggestions. Don't just come and be negative, come with ideas, because ideas help. We're better, we're all better for hearing them, just please keep giving us ideas.
Dr. Paul?
That, that was my point exactly, and I got that from a lot of people as well, that there was a misunderstanding that the plan as presented was the up or down, but it's not.
Ms. Lee?
I think we, I think I can echo all of those, because we would, you would not have heard this many questions from board members if this were a done deal. Because we're still challenging and saying, well, wait a minute. So, you know, clearly, we need input.
I'm gonna merge all the planned growth questions, they basically said, where would Frost High go? Where would Southwest High go? Has Blandford been talked, Nature Center people been talked to? The answer is yes, we've had some of those initial Um, the answer is yes, we've had some of those initial conversations, but the whole purpose behind the planned growth is to take time to study it, to meet with our partners. These are simply concepts that say these are great programs, let's look at how we re, expand them or replicate them. And, um, the other one was around budgeting. I, we had one individual, and this has been a somewhat common, is, you know, we have a budget of 200 million, um, are the savings worth the churn that will happen?
Yeah.
And I think it's important to know, you know, again, they, the, the, one individual said, well, this is 2.5 million in savings. Well, it's actually 25 million in savings over five years. And that's the part you need, this is, cause this is one, it's not just five million, one year, one and done. That's five million annually from here on out that, that would be half reinvested and half saved and, and with, with potential more. So it's really a $25 million five-year plan if you look at it that way. The last thing would be around central office reform. Really, the question was around the how and the when. And as, as Superintendent Neal has said, is we need all hands on deck between now and the start of school next year to implement this plan. Uh, but the, uh, study will be conducted, uh, and recommendations brought to the board for how central office, uh, would be restructured and reorganized. I think, uh, we've already been clear with, with this back-to-school message that was delivered, is that this is already changing the culture of the district overall, and that starts with changing the culture of central office to be more customer-oriented, servicing our schools, providing the support, uh, the resources, the lending, the, the helping hand, uh, and, and general leadership that's, that's not in the old top-down, um, vertical bureaucracy, which is very common in government. It's getting to more of the, the bottom-up. How do we empower those and have the support systems here? And so you've seen a glimpse of it, but that doesn't say when it, that we're looking really, the, the spring is when the study would be conducted with recommendations, I think you were saying, in the summer. And the last part would be, um, oh, the question that staff were asking a lot about the compensation study. And again, this is something that was talked about, is we know this, the, the, one of the basis of this plan is, is looking at talent development, retaining and attracting the best teachers and the best principals. And, and so that we, that compensation study would be something that would be conducted again, uh, within the coming six months or so, uh, with, with the goal of coming back out. And that was one, a lot of people want to know the timing, how that's gonna happen. They asked why it would be done as an independent study. I think it's looking to bring an independent lens. Uh, we could easily go and shop and do our own research, um, but that's what Cambridge and others have said, we need to look at our talent development and acquisition and retention, and that would be part of it. And there's certainly a lot more than that, but I'll stop.
Well, I have a question about the format of the community meetings. I did hear concern about there wasn't really a presentation, there was just kind of the opening of Q and A. Now, I wasn't there, I had another event. But I think because people who are coming to the community meeting may or may not have heard all of this, so there may be a need to have some form of presentation. You know, even if it's like a 10-minute, 15-minute, just to kind of give the overview, three or four slides, and then kind of open it up, because I, I guess the larger document was available, but obviously, you know, if you walk in, you don't have time to go through and fully understand, to prepare yourself to ask a question. So then you're just getting kind of the save my school, you know, remarks as opposed to more details.
We, we did only show the, at a glance, the one pager with the closures, the.
Okay.
So we did just show the one.
Okay.
I just have one, one item that I've heard, uh, from several people as you raised the issue of the central office. I- is there any thought given to whether this building needs to remain? I mean, there, there are questions about the size of this building itself, and particularly with the new plan of getting central office administrators out more. And I, you know, I know we have, we have central office issues, I, I understand that totally, but I thought I'd raise it because I've heard it a number of times.
And we have looked at, we've talked about, as a matter of fact, do we get rid of this building? Um, and it would also get rid of campus. Um, we share with our campus elementary. Um, we do have people that would want to buy this, the two. We may not want to sell, but, I mean, we have had that question asked. Um, and so we have looked at that. Ken, you wanna?
This campus, being the original Calvin College, it's on a central heating plant, so it makes it very difficult if you wanted to split the site.
Well, we kept the, sold the administrative end and, uh, kept the, the educational end.
There'd be a lot of work to do to repurpose that and change the heating plant to accommodate. So it, it's just the nature of how it was built in the first place.
This is our central IT hub. If you ima- imagine, we have 50 buildings, all interconnected, interwired, and it all comes down to this hub. It all, this is the key point, so there would be a pretty significant, significant expense in relocating that. So I'd say it couldn't be done easily, could, well, not easily, it could be done, uh, but there would be an expense associated with it, so we certainly thought that through.
I think people need to hear that. Thank you.
And actually, people have suggested that why don't we move to Central High School? And the deal is with the IT, it would be huge for us to move this entire organization to Central. But I love the building in Central, I mean that.
But it's just to pick it up and move it.
Any other questions?
Does that conclude your report?
You know, I would like, I would like to add, I would like to add just one thing, um, and that is for people that are not able to come out, um, to the meetings, um, John, if you just share, I would like, uh, people to know that they can still, um, submit their questions and their comments and we will respond. Um, it isn't that you have to come out in order for your voice to be heard.
Yep. The action line is 819-1200, uh, that, if you have call with questions, email at communications@grps.org. Uh, we have Facebook and Twitter, of course. Uh, you also can go to Cable Channel 27 and watch the videos there. You can go to the GRPS video player and the GRPS YouTube account to watch all of the pu- the public meetings, as well as this board meeting. So there's lots of different ways. Sign up for the e-news, there's regular updates. So we have lots of ways people can be involved and engaged.
Thank you.
Thank you. Action items, you don't have any? Need a motion for the consent?
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, uh, put the, approve the consent agenda minus the purchasing agenda.
Board?
You're ready, you can call the.
Faal?
Yes.
Geetson, yes. Haskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
President Lanier?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
So now we need a motion. We need a motion for the purchasing agenda?
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
Support.
We open it up for discussion? Discussion on the.
Madam Chair, I will need to recu- recuse myself from the purchasing agenda. Oh, exclamation, explanation is it's a $430,000 expenditure for nursing care to Spectrum Health, that is my employer.
Okay. All the way when you're ready.
Faal?
Any other, wait, any other questions, comments?
Faal?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
President Lanier?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. No discussion items, public comment for non-agenda items? Any public comment for non-agenda items? You would fill out the same card? Did anybody collect any? Or we're out? Okay, Madam Superintendent?
I would like to thank the students that are here tonight, joining us, if you guys want to stand up, from, and then we have Cornerstone. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Randles?
My comment first. Uh, yeah, I wanted to thank the students for coming and making, sorry, um, a public comment. I think it's very stressful, so, uh, it's obvious that you guys really care and find it important to share opinions you've probably heard at school as well, so that's, that's really great. And I do want everyone to understand, uh, that we really are being very careful and thoughtful about this, this whole plan, uh, moving forward. And happy birthday, Ms. Slade.
Thank you.
And get out and vote, right, tomorrow.
Yeah, just a reminder tomorrow when you do go vote, everyone should go vote, that this is the first election with, uh, school board elections in November, so don't forget to flip your ballot over, cause they're probably on the back and, uh.
They are.
Welcome Cornerstone Eagles.
Dr. Faal?
Uh, just encourage everyone to get out to vote. I also want to really encourage community members, students, staff, to please put your input, your questions regarding this. It is a, it is a flexible plan, we want to absorb as many perspectives as possible. I also want to mention, um, my delight at, um, joining a GRPS team to see an IB school in South Chicago. It was a dynamic program and I am so excited about the potential for this district and this community.
Ms. Geetson?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for their feedback. We are listening, we are listening. There, there will be plan adjustments to the plan as a result of your feedback, so I just hope you keep coming. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, there are several other opportunities, so please keep those, um, please keep the feedback coming. I especially want to thank the, the children that we serve for speaking up, because that, at the end of the day, is all that really matters to all of us, is, is our kids. And we, we try to demonstrate that every day, but you guys are helping keep us honest in that, and I, I would like twice as many kids here at the next meeting giving comment. And, uh, please, please encourage your colleagues that we, we are listening and it does matter. I also would like to wish Maureen a happy birthday.
Why are they saying this? They want you to know that I'm seventy.
I wasn't even gonna do that, but.
I think we should sing happy birthday.
And sassy is everybody.
I've got a cupcake that.
Oh, yeah, we have to.
Dr. Randles is a vegan, a vegetarian.
It's a soy cupcake.
A seaweed cupcake?
I don't know what will be in it.
It's a kale, soy, carrot.
Do we have any singers in the building? Who can lead us in singing happy birthday? There we go, come on down. Awesome. Have a seat right there, grab the mic, do whatever you need to do.
I love it.
Maureen or Ms. Slade? Ms. Slade?
Mo, happy birthday, Mo.
That's right, happy birthday, Mo.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Ms. Slade. Happy birthday to you.
No, it's wonderful.
Wow.
That was awesome.
We were standing up for her, not you, Mo.
Arts are alive and well at Preston High School. Last but not least, please vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Ms. Slade?
Thank you very much. Oh, that was wonderful. That was the best birthday song I've ever had. Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Well, I was actually looking, if I thought Mr. Johnson was getting, I was gonna get my lighter out, you know, the old.
You don't do that anymore, you hold the phone up.
No, actually, um, I, I do have a, uh, somewhat of a quick comment. I haven't really thought this through, but over the weekend I thought about, um, uh, maybe to some extent, some, some, maybe some frank discussion we should have. You alluded to it today with, um, uh, the perception of Elger, somebody else alluded to it, to perception of Ottawa, and, um, I guess I can, I guess first of all, let me speak to, um, as a, as a profession that spends time in both buildings, um, the culture of Ottawa is, um, amazing. You know, so I guess, um, any parents who have an issue with that, please, I have no problem talking to you personally, cause I spend time in both buildings, and, um, I'm definitely considering sending my students to, um, Ottawa Hills, and a shout out to Mr. Lewis and the work he's been doing up there.
Absolutely.
But, um, but beyond that, there is a reality, and, and all the students know it, that you do have a knucklehead or two in, yeah, algebra class that prevents you guys from really doing what you came to school to do. And, um, there's no, um, no sense in, I guess, um, pretending that, that, that doesn't happen. So I guess in that regard, I'd like us to have a critical conversation about another seven through 12 option that, um, you know, may be more along the lines of, um, and I don't want to say strict discipline academy, just from a traditional, um, state language that we're accustomed to, but maybe, um, uh, an academy where those students who have chronic, um, disciplinary issues, chronic attendance issues, where, um, we, we, we still commit to educate them, cause I think you, you hit it on point before, unfortunately, we failed those students and sort of given up on them, but I think we, we, um, sort of ramp up our commitment and, and almost have a academic and social development academy, because it's obvious that these young people need some, some help with their, them social skills as well. And of course, we have a lot of finance in the district around, um, KSSN and, and it's a lot of resources coming into this, into the district that, um, is usually the same demographic of students that are pulling on those resources. So I just like us to have a conversation where maybe we, uh, pull those students out of their, um, respective schools, um, district wide, and possibly put them in a, in a, in a situation that is, I don't want to go so far to say paramilitary or boot camp, but in my mind, honestly, that's, that's what I'm thinking. Uh, where, where their day begins with a, a shoe inspection, shoes are shined, um, you know, they really walk class to class, single file. I mean, really, where there's a real commitment to, um, to discipline in this environment. Maybe that's an overlap with ROTC, maybe we, uh, bring our, our children back that come out of the court system, um, but we really, really, um, show the public that, um, that we still have a commitment to children, but also we're not gonna continue this collateral damage that happens in our comprehensive buildings.
That's great.
Was that it, Mr. Ross?
That was my birthday last week, too. I catch you at Creston.
Well, um, I would just like to say, um, thank you to the students who came out today. I don't see Phoenix, but, um, the other young ladies who, um, came out, Anna and, um, the